Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Before we begin, let's have a pledge of allegiance. Thank you for joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's do a little bit of housekeeping items. Let's see. Usual reminder for everyone to make sure the microphone's turned on and you speak clearly into them. We now prepare our minutes through the recording, so it's essential that we do that. Please also make sure applicants and anybody speaking from the public clearly identify yourself for the record on the microphone. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is scheduled for October 4, 2022, at 6:30 PM. That'll be our first 6:30 meeting. October 4, 2022, at 6:30. Okay. Paul is absent tonight, and we will appoint Nelson into a voting position tonight for his slot. And with that, that completes the housekeeping items. Robert, do you have a planning and zoning administrators' report for us?
I have nothing additional to what you said.
Okay. I have written on my notes here that our September 20 meeting is canceled because there are no agenda items as of tonight, and the agenda close date has passed. And October 4 meeting going forward is a 6:30 start time. Item three on our agenda is our consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the board with respect to adopting the consent agenda?
I'm moving adopt the consent agenda in its total.
Lynn Christensen, with her microphone turned off, moves to adopt it in total. Nelson seconds adopting the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That's 7:00. Brings us to item four on our agenda, which is Dick Anagnost and GTONH LLC is the applicant and owner. Its continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan review to construct two multifamily residential buildings totaling 48 units in accordance with the New Hampshire Workforce Housing Statutes, which is RSA 67458. The parcels located on Twin Bridge Road in the R4 residential, Aqua Conservation, Town Center Overlay, Elderly Housing Overlay, and Planned Residential Development Overlay districts. It's Tax Map 5D3 Lot 114. We have it as case Planning Board 2022-25, and it's continued from our June 7, July 5, and August 2 planning board meetings. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just by way of quick summary, while this application's been on the board's agenda several times, it has not yet been opened for hearing. Applicant has requested continuance a number of times. Well, we sorted out the PUD amendment process and to try to sort out some plan revisions, but it is now ready for board consumption. As noted, the planned use development portion of the project has been given final approval by the planning board during August 2 meeting, so we're now ready to proceed with the site plan. Other than that, staff feels the application is ready to accept as complete, but I will defer to the applicant to make a presentation. Let the board make the determination.
Thank you, Robert. I see we have an applicant here with the display.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask something, Bob. I was gonna ask if the staff could give the board just a brief summary of what's implied by the fact that this is workforce housing. How does it affect our procedures and our things that we had to do?
It's a great question. Robert, do you want to tackle that before the applicant begins or as part of the presentation, or maybe the applicant has got something to offer on that regard in terms of it? I know that there's some change in timeframes, and there's also an obligation in statute for us to consider the cost to the applicant in some of the things that we would require of them to do, but I think that there's some other provisions as well, which I don't have on the top of my head.
I don't have those on top of my head either. Tim would be obviously much better to look at that. He's done all the review for this to this point. But yeah, Bob, in essence, you're right. There are statutory requirements that the board would have to adhere to in terms of timeframes and costs to the developer and whatnot. Basically, you'd have to work with the developer to ensure that workforce housing projects come to fruition.
Okay. Well, give me one second here, and I'll actually be able to pull up the statute, and at least we can read it. Should have it here in a second.
I have read the statute and copied what was supplied. I just wanted to translate it into English if we could.
I can give my best effort at that. It's 67458.
I've got a general summary, if you'd like, just some bullet points.
Go ahead.
Just bullet points on the law, which is RSA 67458 through 61. All municipalities must provide reasonable and realistic opportunities for the development of workforce housing, including rental multifamily housing. Collective impact of all local land use regulations adopted under RSA 674 shall be considered to be to determine if such opportunities exist. Workforce housing of some type must be allowed in a majority of land area where residential uses are permitted, but not necessarily multifamily in a majority of those areas. Existing housing stock shall be accounted for to determine if a municipality is providing its fair share of current and reasonably foreseeable regional need for workforce housing, and reasonable restrictions may be imposed for environmental protection, water supply, sanitary disposal, traffic safety, and fire and life safety protection. That's the general gist of the workforce housing law. Your process as the land use board, as part of the application, the developer must notify the board in writing that it's a workforce housing development, which is what they've done. Planning board plat review process goes forward as normal, but discussions of costs should be a part of this. And upon approval of condition, the board has to notify the applicant of those conditions, who then has at least 30 days to identify the cost impact of the conditions upon the economic viability of the project. So there's basically cost ramifications involved. Other than that, it goes as normal.
I think the only thing I would add to that is that there's a specific requirement in the statute that lot size and overall density requirements be, quote, "reasonable", and then reasonable is interpreted based on the developer being able to deliver a project with a market rental that fits workforce housing. So the cost, again, circles back to cost. I don't know if, it's probably not the best PowerPoint presentation, but you only gave me eight seconds warning, so.
Sorry.
Covers you for now?
Covers me for now.
All right. Let's hear from the applicant. Thank you all for coming. Please introduce yourself for the record and give us an introduction so that the board can make their first determination about completeness and then have a further discussion about the merits of the application.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Dick Anagnost. I am the lead developer of the project. Sitting to my right behind me is my co-developer, Brian Michael, and to my left is Jason Lopez, our engineer from Keitch Nordstrom.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Jason. Yep, Jason Lopez, Keitch Nordstrom. You know, we've been before a few of the boards in town, conservation, been before zoning board, been before the board, I think it was two meetings ago, for the amendment to the PUD. So I get into more of that.
Yep. Give us a presentation of your project.
Okay. All right. So this project, Twin Bridge Road, located at the end of the plaza with the tractor supply. We're proposing 48 two-bedroom workforce housing units. This is going to be 100% workforce housing, not a percentage that you see in many projects. There'll be two buildings, three-story buildings, each with 24 units. The subject property is a separate lot off of the end. There's a company that makes countertops. It's on the opposite end of Tractor Supply. So that's where the lot is. It's behind the Sal's Pizza, located right on Twin Bridge. So that lot was part of the original project called the Commons at Merrimack. In 1978, the Commons PUD was approved. The commercial lot, the plaza, was called the Marketplace, and that was approved back in 1980. In 1981, they subdivided off the lot that this project will sit on and separated that from that commercial plaza. So now, under new ownership, they have taken a look at providing workforce housing. So with that, the first step was we were required to go to the zoning board. Under a PUD, there's a maximum per zoning of 400 units permitted. Currently, there's 372 units existing in the PUD. So we sought a variance for an additional 20 units, which would get us to 420 units in the PUD. That would provide us for the 48 units for workforce housing. So we received that variance, and upon receipt of that variance, we needed to go before the board, which I believe was, again, two meetings ago, to receive an approval for an amended PUD. So the board did approve that amendment to the PUD to allow the 20 additional units. So with that, we are here tonight now to discuss the site plan for the creation of, you know, the placement of the two buildings, the parking, and the infrastructure to serve the buildings. So at the onset, I'm gonna start at a different place in the presentation, and I'm gonna start more with the traffic. At the onset of the project, we had discussion with staff, and was alerted that zoning board was the first step. We made presentation to the zoning board, and we had quite a show from abutters. There was a lot of comments about traffic on Twin Bridge Road, a lot of concerns about parking on the side of the road, access through, exiting out onto Daniel Webster Highway. So right at the onset of the project, we contracted with Steve Pernah to complete a traffic analysis. He took a look at the traffic patterns in the area. He took a look at the timing and so forth at the lights, taking a look at the increase in traffic counts from the project. You know, that current proposal, when we first made application, we were looking to take that access point that exists currently in front of the plaza that exits onto Twin Bridge. We were looking to simply gate that, prevent access from our project to enter, you know, exit onto Twin Bridge, and, you know, rectify comments and concerns from abutters with traffic by providing the gate. After further review, we received comment from the fire department that the gate was not the best way to handle that because of situations where municipal aid may be required. They may not have the proper equipment to activate a gate, open a gate. So their request was to eliminate the gate. That caused an issue with opening up the access point and creating traffic with the butters onto Twin Bridge. So we spent some extra time working with the fire department to develop a plan, and what we've done is we relocated the, we're proposing to relocate the access point closer to Daniel Webster, not provide any gates, but sign it and paint it and stripe it and have that utilized as emergency vehicles only. Will it prevent someone from driving through? No. But it will be signed appropriately that it can be monitored by the police department. The idea is we'll gain access for the project through the lighted intersection at Front Street and, you know, provide access through crossesements and so forth through the plaza. Over time, there may be some confusion to start out because these buildings will need a twin bridge for 911 purposes, a twin bridge address. But over time, people will learn that the access is through the plaza, you know, in the way we present marketing material to future owners. So.
Just elaborate, Mr. Chair. So we have this condition existing in a couple of other projects, and management explains, and it's actually part of our package to the tenant when they execute their lease, that the traffic controls that are in place are all explained to them. They're given a map that shows them the traffic patterns, and management polices the fact that those people aren't going to be using it as an exit. The signage is distinct. It's very large. The entire roadway in is striped emergency access only. And we had, at the level of the zoning variance, identified that it would be a safety issue to send our people out there because we'd already identified the number of cut-throughs that are happening onto Twin Bridge already, and the fact that once parking goes on the street from the merchants that are on the road, that the roadway becomes very narrow. So at the variance board level, we had actually identified the condition and explained at the variance board, at the ZBA, I'm sorry, that we would be redirecting our traffic out through the lighted controlled intersection for safety purposes. And I just wanted you to be aware that we have a plan in place that we implement in order to ensure that that's the case.
Thank you for the explanation. Are you going to have onsite management?
Yes, we do have an onsite manager.
What were the hours for the onsite manager be?
The manager usually shows up roughly between 8:00 and 9:00 AM and stays there till 5:00 to 6:00 PM anyway.
Is there a management office in one of the buildings?
Dear, I don't remember if it's in the floor plan or not.
Would have to be, though, if they're gonna be there all day, right?
Correct. Well, we also have roving management, and there's a management office in the mall itself, so.
Oh, it's the same management organization that deals with the mall itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I don't know where that is, but I'm sure it's there. I haven't gone looking for it, so if you don't look for it, you don't see it.
It's Metropolis Property Management, and Scott Schubert is here.
There's Scott back there.
He's the vice president of Metropolis Property Management. He handles the mall currently. It would be his organization or his team that would be also managing the apartments.
Okay. Please proceed with the presentation that you.
So with that, the traffic study prepared by Steve Pernah has been reviewed by Fosan Anil, and they're in general agreement with what we've outlined in that plan. So, you know, there's no need of offsite improvements for the intersections, turn lanes, and so forth. With the minor increase in traffic, the current light out at Front Street, it's an automated system. So as traffic volumes increase and decrease, it calibrates itself and adjusts the time intervals. So he doesn't feel any further work will need to be done there. The, you know, so no offsite improvements due to traffic. The only offsite improvement that we will have will be the addition of a sidewalk down along Twin Bridge to go along with the plans that the town have for additional sidewalks in that area. So no offsite improvements other than that sidewalk.
Where's the sidewalk gonna be? Can you show me on your plan? The microphone behind you on the stand, you can take with you and continue. Just take it off the stand if you want.
So the mall plaza building, this is where the Sal's Pizza is. So we've got Daniel Webster. There's an existing sidewalk right now that comes down and stops at this driveway access going in behind Sal's Pizza.
Okay.
What we'll do is we'll continue it from that location. This is the existing driveway curb cut that accesses into the front of the plaza. We relocated it over to the side a little bit, so we'll end up continuing sidewalk all the way down to the rear access. This is the rear access that the loading, you know, delivery vehicles utilize behind the plaza. So this access point will maintain as part of the function of the plaza while I'm here in front of this. You know, so the idea of relocating this driveway access point was people are used to looking down along the front of the plaza and seeing the exit down here and, you know, wanna go that way. So the idea was by relocating it a little bit behind the building and throwing in plantings across that and removing that, it removes it from the line of sight. We'll sign up here, no exit. So start building that ability to discourage people and train people in a new traffic pattern. But to answer the original question, yes, sidewalk from here down to the second access point.
Okay. Thank you. On your traffic study that you were talking about, a couple of the details about it, I just had questions about it. What day of the week and time of the day is your peak hour, and what's your peak hour trips?
The, it's the PM, and that's between the 4:00 and 5:00.
So weekday PM or in particular?
Yeah, weekday PM.
Okay.
4:00 to 5:00 o'clock. So traffic, in terms of net impact, the roadway volumes, the greatest impact will occur during the worst-case weekday PM peak hour period on a short section of Front Street between North Plaza driveway and US Route 3. Traffic volume on this segment will, are projected to increase by 67 vehicles during the PM peak period. Traffic volume on Twin Bridge is expected to decrease by 39 vehicles during the PM peak.
Because of the plaza being blocked off and they're not exiting through there?
Correct. Yes.
So does your increase account for those 39 going out the other way, plus the ones from your apartment building?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay. What's your morning peak number of trips? 7 to 8, 8 to 9? I'm sorry for making you dive into the encyclopedia data.
No, no. Well, Steve Pernah was unable to be here this evening, so I'm trying to digest and, okay, so the two-way traffic flow on Front Street totaled 794 in the AM and 1,122 in the PM, with majority southbound, 59% southbound.
That's from all sources, though. That's not all yours.
Correct.
Yep. I was trying to figure out what their addition.
That's all the traffic on the roadway.
He's looking for the AM peak.
If you want, we can continue with the presentation, and at some point in the gap between questions, you can look for it. Grab it. Okay. Sorry for the interruption. It wasn't meant to be stumped.
No, not a problem. You know, so I'll go through the onsite stuff fairly quick and take more questions at the end, more specific. But we've got 77 parking spaces, actually. So what we've done is we've provided, we've provided access, you know, along the front of the plaza with a straight line coming down in. We've got a dead-end parking lot coming across the front of this building. There's no connection with this parking to the delivery drive going behind the plaza. Then we bring the loop around this building and connect back in with the drive aisle over here. So with that, we've got 77 parking spaces to serve the needs. We meet the requirements for parking. We do have internal sidewalks going around for all the parking spaces, leading to three entry points at each building, one on each end, one in the center. We have a dumpster located down on this end, close proximity to the end of two buildings, also a common mailbox unit to be located here, again, accessible through the internal sidewalks.
Do you have a copy of this sheet, too, the site plan, that you can point to those things on? Because that would be easier than looking at the satellite, I think. That one doesn't have your parking on it. Okay. So the 77 parking is all on your lot?
No, some of it extends over.
Okay.
So the lot line runs right along the edge of the existing building. So this is our lot line right here. So there's no internal setbacks in the PUD. So that lot line was placed right on the edge of the building.
Yeah.
So we do have some parking spaces that extend over into the commercial lot, but we have a, lack of a better term, a joint-use agreement between the two properties. Currently, both properties are under the same ownership, but we have, the attorney for the project has prepared a document for shared drainage, water, sewer, parking. There's a lot of intermingling of utilities between the two properties, especially right along the lot line here.
That's what PUDs do. That row of parking that's not on your lot?
Yep.
Is that all new parking, or is that losing some of the parking that's existing today?
So that existing parking lot, we're gonna remove some of it. So basically, what we're gonna do is get, there's a row of 20 here and a row of 17. This is all gonna get removed, and our building is actually gonna sit over a portion of that existing parking lot.
Okay. So the commercial development's gonna lose 37 spaces. Does that put them in any jeopardy of not having enough parking?
No.
Not when I've driven by there, but I don't know if there's some ideas to have different stores or?
We have close to 600 spaces. We're way over parked.
Yeah. And the other, there was a, the original PUD had, I forget what it was. I don't think it was a bank. I think at one point there was a farmer's market out near the lights by Front Street. There was a pad site out there that was meant to be developed, and there's no building there today, and that's got parking in that location. So ample parking out there today.
Yeah, I've never seen it crowded or had any difficulty parking in there. I just didn't know if you had, at some point, different tenants that might come in that might have different needs. But I agree with Mr. Anagnost, it does look like there's an ample amount of parking and overdone, and it really hasn't even been affected when traffic, when Tractor Supply uses a bunch of the spaces for display, or the dog training that they do, or that sort of thing, and sort of all sorts of space.
Mr. Chair, I have your answer.
What you got?
So AM peak is 125 cars. 19 of them are generated by the Workforce Housing Project, and the overall intersection will operate below capacity through 2034.
Okay. So you're adding 19 to a stream of about 120, you said?
125.
125. Okay. Yes.
Can I just clarify? How many units you have in these two buildings, again?
48.
48 times two people with two cars, and there's only 19 in excess of that?
They don't all leave at the same time. They don't all arrive back at the same.
Oh, bet you they will be pretty close to each other. Not to mention the development you have across the street, across Front Street.
Well, across the street, they're saying the Dunkin' Donuts generates.
I'm not talking Dunkin'. I'm talking about the housing that you have over there.
Well, the Dunkin' Donuts generates 113 to the intersection at peak. at peak and that's a pretty heavy peak morning AM user, so a hundred-and-twenty-five overall is, is very.
Yeah, nineteen to twenty peak out of a forty-eight unit apartment building is pretty standard for what we've seen in other developments and we've pushed them to test that before and I'm always amazed that they come out and it's accurate and ends up paying on the money. Jason, continue please.
So sewer, currently the sewer for the plaza cuts down through this property out to Twin Bridge and down the hill. We're simply going to tie into a couple of the existing manholes. We've received comments from sewer department, a little more coordination with them, but we've got the existing sewer infrastructure in place. Water comes down behind the plaza. We still need comment from water, but working out with them to tap into the water line over in this area. We're going to bring in two new, working with the fire department, two new yard hydrants and tie both in for domestic and fire, both buildings. Drainage, currently today drainage, there's a catch basin about in the middle of this building and another one over here and then all the drainage flows towards Front Street, picks up all the parking lot of the commercial site, heads into Front Street, down the hill. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Front Street, as you head down the hill, you've got the power lines just going over the road. As you start to make that bend to the left, all that drainage heads down, there's a detention pond just off to the right of the road there. So that's where all this drainage existing makes its way to. So what we're proposing is underneath, we're going to put in curbing, closed drainage and underneath this area, we're going to have subsurface chambers. We'll capture the runoff, mitigate the peak. Right now, we're having a conversation, I've reached out to the state about infiltration, infiltration being an issue in the St. Gobain area. We've got some infiltration worked into the design now where that stormwater all flows down to that pond down by the wells, that's a sandier material down there, infiltration taking place down closer to the wells. The thought process on our end is let's capture that, keep that, some of that up here, mitigate that further from the wells, but that's going to be a conversation still with Meramec Water and also we've reached out to DES for their input about whether or not they'll permit the infiltration in that location. If not, we'll just simply eliminate that from the design and mitigate the peaks and it'll continue the same path that goes today.
Okay.
Jason, if I may, Mr. Chair, if you'll indulge me, there'll be an eight-inch water service that'll be coming off the main pipe because the buildings are fully sprinkled and in addition to the two additional hydrants that we'll be providing. And the other thing that may or may not be, I don't think it's shown on your plan yet, Jason, if you could flip to the front. As far as utilities, you'll note the shadow of the building in the upper left-hand quadrant is the current Chinese restaurant. Well, natural gas is right there on our property behind that restaurant. There's a tank farm where the right-hand building is located. We're going to be removing all propane from the site, we'll be bringing natural gas to both the apartment buildings and to the plaza itself, extending the gas line from behind the Chinese restaurant. So thereby eliminating the propane surface tanks and converting the main plaza to gas at the same time.
Thank you for that. Where are your hydrants going to be, your two new hydrants?
We're going to place one up closer, one closer to the, the front of the plaza here and the other one will be down this end of the building. So we'll have one on each end.
Okay, I was just trying to get a sense of whether those would be of service to other parts, other parcels off of your property and it seems like one of them has a chance to be, but the other one probably isn't.
There is an existing hydrant across the street right here.
Oh, okay, so there's not a lot of need.
But we needed to provide new ones on our lot because they can't drag the line across an active road while in use, so.
Okay.
That's why we provided two additional onsite. Utilities will be underground, we're going to have to pull those off, have a drop pole and bring underground utilities, they'll come off from Twin Bridge. You know, we've, we've received, I'm sure you all have the package, staff comments. A lot of the comments, it, it sounds like some of the departments weren't able to review the plans that we submitted in July, so there's some carryover comments that have been addressed, just haven't received additional comment from departments. But with what we've got on the list, we don't see any issues with the outstanding comments or, or conditions at this time. With that, I will hand it to the board with more specific questions on the project.
Sure. Board members, our first task is to decide whether the application is complete and has enough information to inform our decision. Do you have any questions of the applicant in order to consider such a question? Not, is there a motion? I'm sorry, question first.
Yeah, a couple of things come to mind because he has pointed out several changes that are to be made to this plan. Relocation of the passage through, this extra landscaping, there's a bunch of things that aren't on here yet.
They are on there, but we have not received review from some of the, I believe engineering is, has not reviewed the new plan. I know fire has, we've been working with them.
So we're being asked to review and all, to accept an old plan?
No, this is a new plan.
No, new plan.
We have a new plan.
This is the new plan?
Yes, yes.
Well, I misunderstood what you said then. I thought you said there was going to be some landscaping that made it look like there wasn't a through passage?
Yeah, there is, it's on sheet seven. While you're looking at that, Maureen, did you have a question or you, what was your question?
I just wanted to ask about the workhouse, workforce housing. What was your understanding of it? Because I heard you said it's all going to be workforce housing. What is your definition, I guess?
All forty-eight units are earmarked as workforce housing and will be targeting sixty percent of median income. Most workforce projects, let me explain about workforce housing. So there's a deep target, which is thirty percent of median income, which is essentially homeless and very poor, then there's fifty percent of median income, which is typically targets that, sixty percent is what we target with New Hampshire housing. The state of New Hampshire targets workforce housing at eighty percent to a hundred-and-twenty percent of median income. So depending upon which definition you want to, want to pull up, it'll range anywhere between thirty percent of median income and a hundred-and-twenty percent of median income. This project is targeted at sixty percent of median income, which is about forty-five thousand dollars max.
Further income and the intent is that you're supposed to be able to pay for your housing costs, rent and all utilities on thirty percent of that income. So thirty percent of forty-five means about fifteen thousand dollars for the rent and utilities would make this a workforce housing under their plan, roughly ballpark numbers.
Mr. Chair, go back to Nelson's question.
Yeah, go ahead, or Nelson, is he working on the same answer?
On, on sheet seven, the landscape plan?
Yes, okay, that's what you meant, I see, because I didn't see the, the clear passage, but I, I understand what you put here and.
Okay, all right. Are we okay or do you have any follow-ups or are there other plans that you thought we didn't have, believe it's of?
Okay, well, I think I'll let it be for now. I think I'll have a lot of comments on this when we get to it, but, but they don't affect its completeness, availability for discussion or acceptance for review.
Okay, does anyone else have comments or questions about the question of whether the application's complete? If not, what's the will of the board? Lynn?
I will move that the board, I have it on, I, I move that the board accept the application as it is substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
A second.
Is that you, Brian? I wasn't looking. Brian, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to find the application complete. The applicant gave a rather thorough presentation, does anyone have any questions about the presentation itself or want to hear more aspects of this from the applicant? Barbara, I'm sorry, Nelson, I saw you too, but.
That's okay, I have a bunch of questions and comments that cover a lot of areas, so.
Want to go first?
Well, I'll let Barbara go first.
So getting back to the discussion about the change in the entrance on Twin Bridge Road or the exit, whatever you want to classify it as, I see where you put signage at the north end of building one. Is there signage going to be on that little ax, on that Twin Bridge entrance? Right there? Because that little signage there is not going to stop anybody from building two, going down there to Twin Bridge Road and jumping off. I see one sign that says emergency vehicles only, but I don't see anything that said stop, turn around, go.
There, there's one sign proposed on this side, it's a no outlet sign. Again, we have the no outlet sign over here and then down at this location, we are marking all four corners, emergency vehicles only and then proposing this to be striped off much like a accessible spot in between the two accessible spots hashed off, looking at pavement markings here. So that's, that's what we have proposed and as Mr. Anagnost has stated, you know, the directional information, so the residents and visitors here are going to know in and out through the front street.
Okay, and will your manager, like when they first open these buildings and they become occupied, will your manager actually be standing there to make sure that they're not used and that people do in fact get used to not going through there? Because you know what human nature is.
The way that that's presented, Ms. Healy, thank you. I can barely, I can only see a big part of your glasses.
Oh, I'm told that's a problem.
The, the management team has an actual package that's handed out to each vehicle, I mean to each tenant and with that comes directions on where vehicle parking is and it comes with specific directions as to how to enter and exit the site and there's typically a big map in it of the site that shows where vehicles can enter and exit and where they're prohibited from being parked and where they're prohibited from being traveled. And that's how it's explained to them when they sign it and each one of those documents is part, an integral part of the lease package and a tenant signs each one of those documents. So if there's a violation, we have fines and all kinds of other things that are in place to control that. And if I may, Mr. Chair, there's one more thing that I forgot during the presentation. In my meetings with the Butters, one of the things that they asked me to present would be that their preference would be to put some no parking signs along the Twin Bridge Road street and we volunteered to pay for and install those signs if the board sees fit to add that as a condition of the plan as well.
Okay, may I continue?
Yes, of course.
On the east side of building two, where the back road is to get over to the plaza for our deliveries, are you going to put any kind of noise abatement there? Because those are probably going to be tractor trailers for the most part.
Yeah, no, no.
So all of, all those people residing on that east end of the building are going to hear those tractor trailers all the time?
We do have, you know, it's fencing, we've got fencing more for the visual and there will be some landscaping, but not, you know, no significant, you know, walls or anything like that.
If I may supplement, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
Behind the building, Ms. Healy, there are no loading docks, so large tractor trailers have a difficult time unless they have a lift gate coming down, going in and out and we have very little heavy tractor trailer traffic. Typically, the only one that gets a tractor trailer there is tractor supply.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of.
Yeah, their trucks would come in the other side anyway.
Sometimes they do, but I've seen them use that entrance as well. One, two more questions. The, I see where you have handicap parking. The doors that are closest to those entrances where the park, handicap parking is, are those auto doors?
They'll need to meet building code, so whatever, whatever that code, kind of a question for the architect, whatever that code requires.
Okay, and my last question is, I think you said there were forty-two units?
Forty-eight.
Eight, forty-eight, this is why I keep getting confused because your plate's all say forty-eight. Okay, thank you.
That's how many they're building, isn't it, forty-eight? I wanted to follow up on that question about the driveway and the one-way access that is proposed here. Robert, I don't know if you recall or, or maybe some other board members do, I believe there's a similar configuration at the Neighbor Works development onto DW Highway that's not gated but is emergency access only?
Neighbor Works says it's actually gated.
It's gated, why were they able to gate that when we're having a problem gating this one? Not your answer, okay?
I could probably answer that question because we did meet with the fire department. So for purposes of nine-one-one, the buildings have to have a Twin Bridge address.
Yep.
If there's mutual aid, they're going to go to that address and if it was gated, they wouldn't have a key to the Knox box that we proposed and sometimes the automatic gate openers don't operate for mutual aid responders. So the fire department felt that it would be mine, I'm sorry.
John's standing up behind you, ready to offer some support. Perfect, but John, got to get to a microphone first and all of that made sense to me, I just didn't know why that didn't produce the same result at the other development.
John Manuel, Fire Marshal. Close. The reason why Neighbor Works has a gated access is because there was no access to that location before, so that was put in at our request to have access for an emergency use. In this particular case, the access already exists and is basically considered to be an existing non-emergency access. So where he was proposing to block it off completely, we said we need that access. We typically come down Twin Bridge Road when we're accessing that plaza to begin with and will turn into the plaza, either the front or the back, depending on the call. So to give that up, we, we basically did not want to lose that access because to go all the way to the signalized intersection, come back down, it's just, it's much easier for us to access, plus we like more than one point of access anyway. So that's why we asked not to have a gate on it. We don't like gates, we prefer not to have gates on any emergency access, but we understand in the case of like Neighbor Works, if there was no gate there, they would be using that constantly as a second way in and out and it wasn't originally intended for that.
Thank you for weighing in and providing the answer and for doing it a little out of the usual order since we didn't get to that part yet, but I really appreciate you being here, especially to answer my questions. Nelson, you had some other comments or questions about the?
I have a bunch of questions and comments, but I'll start off, since we're talking about the, this access, I am not persuaded that it's a good idea to close that off as an exit from the parking lot that services all these other businesses in the area. And I think that it would have been better to make that, to leave that, I would say, as a usable entrance and exit for the shopping plaza. So I don't know, I, I understand that, you know, it, maybe it's awkward, but it's a way in and out that is missing now and every business and everybody who's in there who wants to get out has to go out through Front Street and I'm not convinced that this is a good idea to block, to essentially block it, you've semi-blocked it or you've blocked it with paint.
Functionally blocked it any or at least.
Functionally blocking it, yeah. So I'll listen to more about that later, but if you want to hear the rest of my comments.
Yeah, we do.
Sure, okay. The, the pedestrian issue. The pedestrian issue that you brought up, it was recommended by, I think, our consultant that the sidewalk on Front Street that runs from Route Three to the, to this development, and goes a little beyond, and then it ends before it comes to the, going, going east now on that sidewalk. You go as far as the access road and stops.
Front Street.
That's Twin Bridge.
On Twin Bridge?
On, on Twin Bridge Road.
Oh, I thought you said Front Street.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
I, I think I'm tracking where you are. You're talking about this area, Nelson?
Yes.
Yeah. So, we brought the, I brought the sidewalk down to the start of this access point. I didn't carry, our property line is over here. So, the comment was to discuss with the board whether or not to extend it, this additional to, you know, and dead-end it at the property line. So, there's about ninety-five feet with probably thirty feet of that, the driveway. So, there's probably another sixty, sixty-five feet of sidewalk there.
Now, how far from there is the trail entrance into Twin Bridge Park? Which is on the other side?
I don't know the answer to that.
It's not far. It's, right now, people walk it. And it's part of a loop system of sidewalks and so on that we have in the town center plan for future development. But it would tie into the trail that comes across the twin bridges in Twin Bridge Park. And the concept being to connect that, but for pedestrians, as well as connecting the shopping plaza for pedestrians. There's no connection shown on this plan yet to connect the, this new development with the shopping plaza, so that somebody can walk to the shopping plaza if they wanted to.
There's sidewalks that go right up to their property line.
But it, does it go all the way? I mean... Well... It does, it looks like it ends before it gets there. I guess that'd be my comment. No. Between your housing development and the shopping plaza, the sidewalk on the shopping plaza should connect to the sidewalk in the housing development.
You're saying the connection here?
You got it.
You probably can do that. I just got to look at the grades and make sure that the grades would work, probably get that short segment.
Okay, so, we're getting into the weeds now, but it's a beginning.
I may ask a question, Mr. Chair, while we're on the subject of sidewalks? So, in the staff comments, it says that the board should discuss whether or not they want that final piece beyond our
Yes.
back door, I mean, there in our property line. Could we get some direction on that?
Yes, absolutely so. I don't know if the board's ready to tackle that specifically while Nelson's kind of going through his list, but we'll get you some guidance one way or another on that. And also, when we do get, well, I'll, I'll talk about that when we get to it.
Yeah. Okay. To continue, the, there's issues in the Merrimack Village District. In addition to the PFOA, there's salt issues. And there's salt contamination that's getting into our drinking water, and every year, it goes up a little more. And some of that salt is coming from this area, and that infiltration basin that you show under the power lines. That, I would strongly encourage and want you to make, to capture that runoff from that parking lot, if you can, and put it into another system.
As I stated, that's what we were attempting to do, and provide some infiltration up on this site, but that will be at the direction of DES, and whether or not that would be permissible in the, in this zone, because we're in close proximity to St. Cobain.
Well, if somebody explains to DES that in one case, you're putting it five-hundred feet closer to the well...
I've made, I've made the case. I'm waiting for response.
Yeah. Okay.
Nelson, I think Robert had some insight he was going to offer on that question.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to the plaza parking lot as a separate lot, but at least Note Twenty-Six on this plan puts a salt and de-icing chemical restriction on this particular parking lot.
Yeah. But, does that mean no salt?
Yes. No salt.
All right. I didn't, didn't see that particular note.
That's standard condition from conservation, and that was added per their requirement.
Okay. Let me see here. Okay, you explained about the gas in this... Oh, yeah. Where, then, once this infiltration basin, this infiltration basin only infiltrates part of the runoff from this, these two sites combined, right? There'll still be some that go into this overflow system. There's an overflow somewhere.
Yes.
Where is that overflow?
So, currently, today... Today, there's a catch basin. See, back in, in the early eighties, when they did the plaza, there was actually plans to put a larger end user out here.
Remember it, well...
So, the drainage and the sewer, well, or whatever. I, I wasn't, yeah, I was a little too young then. But, um, the, you know, they had this all planned out to get the water, the sewer, all the utilities around what would have been that footprint for that end cap user. So, there's existing drainage out there today. So, we've got a catch basin here, here, and here. That was all developed in part of the plaza as a whole, and that all made its way to Front Street, down the hill to that detention pond by the power lines. So, what I've done today is, we're removing all those, because we're going to place the building over this section. So, we've got to, we've got to realign that drainage. Well, in doing that, what I've done is, I've captured all the runoff, and I bring it all from the parking and the roofs into this subsurface system that's going to be under the parking lot here. That will then mitigate the peak rate of runoff. The question is, is can I also decrease the volume of runoff? And that's where the infiltration comes in. If we're permitted by the state to do the infiltration here, then I can also decrease some of the volume that's running off the site. If they say no, then I'll modify the system so it's not infiltration, and then, we're mitigating the peak to meet the town requirement. The volume would then be, you know, that would pass through as it does today. So, that's, that's the case I've presented. Haven't received response yet. So, what you're suggesting is what we're trying to do pending approval from the state. So, that system under here will capture it, and when that comes to capacity, and it needs to overflow,
Yeah.
it will then connect into that existing system that's already out under the parking.
Okay. So, the overflow goes into the infiltration basin on the power line?
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if there was another place that this was being dumped.
No, the, the site's so flat, there's no, nowhere to outlet it. We have to continue outletting our overflow to our system into that closed system.
Yeah. Okay. I understand.
And in either case, what's produced on your new site is going to be salt and de-icing chemical free. Whereas today, it's not much pavement there now, but
No.
And it gets salted.
There, there is, there is a little pavement here, and, you know, they plow a lot of that snow. When I was out there during the winter, a lot of that gets this way, which gets out into these structures sitting out here.
Okay.
Or goes the other way.
Ultimately, it all gets into the structures, yes, and it heads, heads down Front Street. Yep.
Okay. Okay.
What else you got, Nelson?
Something else, something else here. You, you explained the gas situation, which I had a question about. I wanted to know about the parking, the net parking situation. You've taken away some parking from the plaza, and you had, take for both your buildings and for some additional parking to service this site. And where do we stand in parking on the two sites now compared to our requirements?
Well, the plaza, plaza's got ample parking out there now, and we are, we are removing, like I was saying earlier, there's a little portion of that pavement that extends over the parking lot that extends under our lot. We'll be building our building here.
I understood that, yeah.
So, there's about thirty-seven spaces here in these two sections that will, will be removed. And then, we're going to rebuild some parking in there for the apartments. So, there will, there will be a slight decrease in the number of parking spaces for the plaza.
It will also decrease where your new parking goes on their property. Right? In other words, you're not only taking off parking that's there, you're also taking some more and giving it to this property, right?
There'll be, yeah, there'll be dedicated parking for our project.
Yeah.
Yep. In this area or up here, there's some dedicated parking on that, but we're going to have a, joint use agreement isn't the proper term, but there's an agreement between the two properties.
Yep. There'll be a parking easement that'll be allowed on the site.
That is necessary.
Maybe I can help you, Nelson, a little bit. So, the site has close to six-hundred spaces on it. Okay?
Okay, it's that many.
To meet the parking requirement, we only need three-hundred-and-sixty. Our proposal is to remove roughly thirty-seven and allocate another twenty or so
Okay.
so that we weren't recreating more pavement where it wasn't necessary.
I didn't see those numbers on, on the paper, and thank you. That, that explains that. Yeah. Okay. These, there's, it's been pointed out that there's no parking for electric vehicles and/or bicycles on this new site, on your site.
No. Electric vehicles, no, have not proposed that. Could it be added in the future? You know, coming off over in this section? Yes. But again, it goes back to that cost item that was discussed earlier on, looking at reducing costs.
What about bicycle racks? Is that...
Yep.
We don't have any problem adding some bicycle racks. Nelson, we typically...
The board might consider adding that. Let me leave it that way.
All of our projects typically have them anyway, so...
What's that?
All of our projects typically have them anyway, so we have no problem adding a couple.
Okay, good. There were a couple of other things that had me page. Okay, that, that is taken care of. Go ahead, somebody.
Does anybody else want to jump in with some questions?
Anybody else want to jump in with something here?
Neil?
Yeah. So, I noticed that there's only, I think I see three spots for snow storage. Couple along the, the west side, and then further up by the east by the, the mall.
Which sheet are you looking at, Neil?
I'm sorry? I'm looking at sheet two. And it shows up by the, the entrance off of the mall. You have a little bit of snow storage there, and a little bit down on the other end. Is that enough? Do you guys plan on taking the snow out of there if, if there's not enough room? I mean, you're going to be taking up parking lot spots?
Only if it became necessary, Mr. Ankutel. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You wouldn't be pushing it out into the other parking area in the mall or anything?
We could. We've stockpiled there in the past, and there's been a heavy snow. We typically stockpile in the lot. We're so overparked that we have so much extra space that
Yeah.
up to the left where the Chinese restaurant is, to the left of the Chinese restaurant, we've used that as snow storage before.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, so these, you own both these properties?
Yes.
Okay. So, that makes, that makes sense to me then. Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chair, there's also Note Seventeen on the plan, which requires them to truck excess snow off the site if it becomes an issue.
I didn't see it. I just read them all. All right.
I also, I was, I was looking at four snow storage spaces. You said three.
Um, I don't see the fourth one, I guess.
I see one close to DW Highway, right behind the parking lot themselves.
I see it now, yeah.
And then, further down that path, and then, past the emergency driveway, and then the one by the building.
Plenty of room if they can utilize the other property then. Yeah. Okay. I just, and this is just a question from my own curiosity, what exactly is a stop bar?
Stop bar is the solid bar on the, that's painted anytime you come up to a stop sign.
Okay.
Essentially, is the area that you're not supposed to go across.
So, it's not a physical, not a physical, like, lower gate or a
Name for that big white line.
Or anything like that? Okay. I just...
The white line that's like twelve eighteen inches wide that is by the stop signs, that's just, that's what its name is.
Okay. Right. So, painted, painted stop sign on the ground?
Yeah. Thank you, Neil. If Nelson hasn't found his question yet, let's talk about the sidewalk on that last little portion going down Twin Bridge Road. And we hinted at this a little bit when we were talking about electric vehicles. This piece of sidewalk would be one of those elements that the statute's referring to, where the applicant could return to us, saying that that would have a cost impact of a hundred thousand dollars or something, and then that would make my rent outside where I needed to be, and we would have to respond to that under the statute. That doesn't mean that we can't support the sidewalk and then hear that information and decide what to do with it. But as we add to those things, and whether it be that bit of sidewalk or electric vehicle parking stations or that kind of thing, those are all going to fit into that category where the applicant's probably fairly cost-sensitive. If you added a hundred thousand dollars to the project, it probably adds, I don't know, what, something to the rent that could push them out of that formula that's driven for workforce housing, making it too expensive. With that in mind, we can still have the discussion and decide whether we would like the applicant to bring us that data and tell us that it costs too much to do that, or maybe it doesn't. Maybe it's cheap. I don't know. But as we have that conversation about the sidewalk and everything else, that's what the statute requires us to do when it comes to cost. What do you guys think about that sidewalk? I get the connection that Nelson's talking about, if there's some trails that connect to Twin Bridge Park, it's probably a good place to walk. It's also a Twin Bridge Road down that section of it. I don't travel it very often, but it doesn't seem to be very busy the couple of times that I've been on it. And people walk there. As it is. I mean, Nelson, you said people are walking there as it is, right?
Well, I say that it's shown as a trail on our town center plan, that it connects to that trail that comes through Twin Bridge Park, and eventually makes a loop back, a walking trail that would go from Twin Bridge Park up Twin Bridge Road and back along Route Three. When the new bridge is put in, it will have, it will have a sidewalk there, a safer way to get across Babusik Brook, which is, right now, this is the only ways, the only, well, the only safe way across Babusik Brook for pedestrians.
Is to come back through here. Robert, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I just wanted to answer Nelson's question earlier. You asked how far it would be from roughly their property line, where the, sorry, where the service, where the sidewalk terminates now, roughly where the service driveway is to the trailhead. It's about four-hundred-and-sixty, four-hundred-and-seventy feet.
Four-hundred?
Yeah.
It's further than I thought.
Yeah.
And then, this little piece of sidewalk would give you, I think the applicant said roughly ninety-ish feet?
Yeah. An additional, probably sixty, sixty-five feet of sidewalk. I, really, when I was looking at the layout, to dead-end, turn, terminate it, just dead stop at the property line, didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, so that's why I just chose to stop it here. You know, we could extend it a little further, or put a ramp up, and then, it's just going to stop, just like it does along this frontage. They went to the end of the frontage, and it stops dead.
That one was another issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It gets really narrow up by DW Highway in the front of that one with this big elevation change.
Yeah.
My personal opinion is that I would not necessarily think this is a critically important piece of sidewalk to add. If if the applicant wanted to do it, I certainly wouldn't say no, but it doesn't seem to me to be screaming out as a vitally important one based on the people that are going to live in the apartment potentially using it. Um, yeah, some people may, but at the same time, does that make it unbalanced worth the cost of doing it? My sense. Right?
Do we know the vehicles per day on Twin Bridge Road as it stands?
It's probably in that traffic study somewhere.
Sorry to make you do some homework, but.
Yeah.
So where I'm going with that would be that if the traffic is not substantial, one could walk on the road, actually safely. I would think, I don't know.
It's what, it's what happens on a lot of neighborhood streets where there's no sidewalks is the traffic goes, walks on the edge of the road. Other discussion about other topics.
Looks like we've got um, twenty-four. This was the AM peak twenty twenty-two, uh, seven to eight uh, in the morning. And he had twenty-four. And then in the PM, we had fifty-nine.
Cars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Existing.
In, in and out, so about half in, half out?
Yeah.
On, on Twin Bridge Road, which is none of their traffic because their traffic is excluded from that direction.
Yeah, and that's, that's total, right?
Existing today, that would include any vehicles that are coming down Twin Bridge and entering in.
Oh, that's right. You said you were going to diminish those.
Right.
With your development. That's actually going to get less.
Eliminate thirty-nine.
Yeah.
In the, in the PM.
Right.
So if their peak hour traffic is, are those kinds of numbers, it's a walkable street?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Oh, that's a new one, walkable street.
Well.
Okay.
It is, it is a term that we've used for other purposes and it's not correctly used by me there, but it's a street with very low vehicle traffic.
Yeah, well, it's, there's trucks and that sort of thing. There's a lot of trucks use it for longest property in the back.
They counted them.
What?
They counted them in their traffic report, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. That's present, present use, yeah.
And that is the, the peak hour. That's the peak hour.
Yeah.
We're not talking about total traffic in a day. We're talking peak hour there.
Along those same lines, do you know how many of, of that traffic is actually coming down Twin Bridge and turning into existing right now? How much of it is turning into the commons?
I think that was the thirty-nine they said are going to get eliminated when they blocked it off. Well, I guess there's still the back entrance for the service.
In the AM, his count is showing ten turning in.
Okay.
So twenty-four coming down, ten turning in. The PM, there was fifty-nine coming down, twenty, twenty-eight turning in, but I guess in the PM, the critical is eleven coming out.
Twin Bridge Road.
You have ninety-six possible cars pulling out of there within a two to three hour period in the morning.
No, they can't get to the front street, they can't get to Twin Bridge Road from the apartment.
Right, I'm just, I was looking, because Nelson said he was really crazy about the idea of blocking off that street.
Oh, um, I'm kind of with Nelson on that one. I probably wouldn't have gone with the emergency only access, but I, if you did, then it would have to be located differently because it can't be that close to the one behind Sals Pizza and all that.
Right.
Um, but yeah, I'm not going to fight City Hall on that one. If they want it to be one way and then whatever, it's fine with me. Um, but the, the numbers that they're estimating for their trips from a forty-eight unit apartment building, when we did the one at exit eleven, there's like two hundred and seventy-five apartments in there. And they, traffic study came back with a number like sixty-four peak hour trips and you know, everybody didn't believe it. Um, and we sent them to go measure trips at an equivalent two hundred and eighty unit apartment building and then we had to measure it after they'd built the thing and those, those numbers are right. Other comments or questions?
The only other one I had of any significance here is the, the lighting issue. Is it a question of spillover of lighting?
Um, and what are you going to do about that? Yeah, in, in the original um, uh, plan set that we submitted, um, I was looking at lighting, uh, the access point that we were gating. Um, I've since had the plans revised. The lighting guy has revised the plans. Um, we've eliminated that spillover. So we do have the lighting plan. They'll all be LED downcast, you know, the Doc Sky compliant lights. So I had some lighting over here. I wanted that access point, the gate area to be lit, so there was spillover. And then I believe there was some spillover coming in this direction.
And some onto the
We've, we've relocated lights to prevent the spillover. And then there was another question in the comments here about, uh, are we over lighting in the parking lot? So if you go out there today, there's a single light, um, right by the restaurant. Um, then there's a head, I believe it's got three lights on it, located uh, in front of these plaza. There are no lights existing today down at this end. Um, so actually, with the addition of these lights, it's going to better support um, these parking spaces with the addition of these. So the combination uh, shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue. It shouldn't be overly bright because we've only got a single head and I believe it's a, a triple head at this location up here.
Well, is that the lighting plan that you've given us in this package?
Yes.
It shows some spillover, that's all I'm saying. Spillover in the north, going north, the spillover onto the, and and question.
Onto the plaza property. Yes, yes, absolutely. Because, you know, we're lighting our parking spaces
Yeah.
Uh, for our project and we have that, that, that joint use and that easement. Yes.
And this plan didn't include the lighting that's there, right, from the plaza itself?
It does not, it, it, we're showing the location of the light poles, but we're not including the illumination from those. Yes.
So I guess the question is, what, what's the real lighting in there? Because we
You know, without, without actually knowing the, the exact head, the reflector and all that, I mean, you're kind of taking a guess at what the light is. Um, and, and running it through the software. Uh, you'd need all the lighting, you know, the fixture data in order to go and find that.
Yeah.
And, and add it to the plan.
If I may, Mr. Chair, give a sort of reverse explanation?
Of course.
So could you point out the lights again, Jason, that are in the existing plaza? Those two locations are the only two existing pole lights that exist now, Nelson?
Yeah.
They're not sufficient enough to light the southern portion of the parking lot.
Yeah.
So because we're going to give an easement for tenants to park in those spaces, that's why we put lights there to spill over for safety and, and to illuminate the areas where the tenants are going to park. But if you'll note where that stops, it's a significant difference or a significant distance between there and existing pole light.
They're a fair distance away. Okay. Other comments or questions, Nelson?
I think I'm done for now.
It's not your last opportunity. You can ask more later.
It's not?
No, it's not.
Oh, good. I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a pass.
Take a pass. Does anyone else have comments or questions of the applicant? Um, Mr. Chair?
I have one more.
Yes, Neil?
Maybe, maybe two. Um, this already went through peer review with the fire department?
Yes.
So they already, you guys already looked at like the radius turns and whatnot for the truck access and everything on that emergency exit only?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is this pet friendly?
Yes.
So dogs and cats and whatever? So I don't, I'm looking, I don't see a lot of green space on the, on the plan. If you, if you have people walking dogs, would you suspect they're going to be doing that? Just thought.
Yeah, page seven is the landscape.
Especially if you're going to end the park, if you're going to end the sidewalk at the end and they need to walk down the street to the tree line or something to take their dogs. I'm just curious what, what your thoughts are.
Have them plan for it.
Have them plan for it. It'd be nice to see, I mean, it's, it looks like it's pretty hard to probably even get any more green space. Um, but that may be something that we want to consider is having a designated spot. I just don't imagine people, you know, taking their dog for a walk in a parking lot.
They won't do that. Um, there is a fenced in area that's at the end of the plaza now, which was part of that doggy daycare that was in the end unit for a little while and you're still showing it on the plan. Is that staying with the plaza or is that some space?
Yeah, that's staying with the plaza. The tenant uses that, so I've uh, incorporated fencing here just to kind of block that and then we have the landscaping along the fence just to create that visual.
Is that still the doggy daycare tenant or somebody else?
No, they've gone.
No, it's a, yeah, that's what I thought.
They do countertops there?
Correct.
Manufacture countertops.
Oh, so they're just using it outside for stone and all that kind of storage? Okay. Um, I was hoping that we were finding a little space that was usable for you for dog walking and things.
If I may, what is the ground made out of between the, the building and the plaza itself? So you had that fence there. Is that going to be mulch? Is that pavement?
In here?
In here.
Uh, grass.
No, it is grass. Okay.
Yeah.
So I think that would suffice.
Yeah, it looks like it could probably be enough.
For one building, yeah. Anyway, just food for thought. Just thinking of all the, you know, trying to think of everything, you know?
Other comments or questions? Right?
So, uh, one thing you guys mentioned earlier, we were talking about fire hydrants. I know the fire marshal had a comment. It was, I think there was whether two or one. I just want some clarification there.
So when we reviewed the plans, we saw that the only hydrant's available was one on Twin Bridge Road and the nearest hydrant was on the opposite side of plaza beyond tract of supply.
Mm-hmm.
So they proposed one on the side of Twin Bridge Road where the development is, which we were fine with, but we asked them to give us a second one to cover not only these two apartment buildings, but the south side of the plaza and they were amenable to doing that to us. So that's what I was trying to point out is there is another hydrant that's going to cover the plaza as well as the new apartment buildings.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Robert? Just the last staff comment that hasn't been addressed yet is, uh, Tim called out the proposed dumpster location and asked the board to review that location screening and being procedures to see if that's sufficient, given its location and proximity to the residences across the street.
Jason, could you point out?
Thank you for that, Robert. Actually, I want to make sure that we circle back. We, we talked about that little tailpiece of sidewalk and I don't know that we actually kind of got a consensus of the board. I said I didn't really think you needed it and does anyone else disagree or want to argue that we got to have that piece of sidewalk?
I would disagree because it's part of our town center plan and I think it should be on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Others? So what's the consensus of the board that we can give to the applicant? No sidewalk or sidewalk?
No sidewalk.
No sidewalks? No sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
Alright, you got enough votes to say that you won't need a sidewalk there? Um, thank you for that. Okay, dumpsters over here. Um, it looks like the dumpsters would have been really accessible by a traffic truck if they could use that emergency access, but if you're not going to use that, I guess they're going to come in on the
They'll have to swing around and then, so we have the dumpster location here. Dumpster, uh, Robert, if you could help me on that meet building setback?
Uh, no, I haven't seen it, had to do with, do, deal with that before, however, um, you know, obviously enclosed and screened, but that fences don't require setbacks.
Okay, and I, I wasn't sure. I, I was providing it in this location to meet the building setbacks. Um, you know, i- it's in close proximity to, you know, the end of this building. Again, the end of this building for, for use. Um, another location that we could put it is, you know, down off, over the edge of the plaza. Um, but up to the commercial property here, um, that would function. Um, really, you know, don't really want to move it into the middle of the development.
No, I don't want you
Down at this end wouldn't work that well, you know?
You can't.
We got the, we got a short landscape wall going down to this driveway.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I didn't want to place it in this front landscape area here, so that's where I found a home. Now, the other option could be up in this area, but it becomes more of a, a walk to residence. That's kind of, that's how I came about the location.
Um, yeah, I think a couple of places that you pointed to are kind of it and the one you chose is probably not the worst of the two. Um, alright, do you have any landscaping or fencing or whatever around it to screen it?
It, it'll be, it'll be fenced around. We have a detail tab it fenced around.
Okay. Is that detail here on?
Uh, yeah, it's in the detail sheets.
In the back, yeah.
Got a ton of detail sheets. Does your detail sheet on the subsurface drainage system have a maintenance specification for it?
Yeah, first detail is located on sheet nine for the dumpster. And yes, we do have a maintenance program for the uh, subsurface system.
Right. Looks like the fencing around the dumpster is going to be vinyl, white, ten eight feet high or mostly eight feet high.
Uh, well, yes, uh, no.
The traction trailer is thick.
Six foot high. The eight foot vinyl was blocking that commercial um, area of the end user.
Okay. Thank you for that.
One more, Bob. Nelson, there's a call out by one of our consultants about signs on the building, asking what they were. I see there's several locations for signs. There's no sign shown. What do you have in mind for signs on these buildings?
Well, I had a conversation earlier today with Robert. Um, so originally, um, well, first of all, signage, required signage, we're going to do numbering on the building on both ends, just for emergency access. But in terms of calling out the um, the apartments, um, like, what is it, London Quartz got their sign right up off of DW. Um, we're looking at a ground sign. Um, but if you place a ground sign down here and you have vehicles parked, you're not going to see the signage. So the thought process was to put it on the end of the building up high, so when people are turning in to the plaza, you've got that end of the building, the sign up there to help with directional and drive people to the apartments. Now, talking with Robert on that is the potential need to, at a later date, go to zoning to get approval on that sign location. Uh, being a sign in a residential district. So we've had a chat with Robert about that.
Those eyes will be important too.
Yes, yeah.
And whether it's illuminated or that's it?
I was going to bring that up as well as if you light that sign up and it's sitting on the back of the building or the front or side of the building, don't shine those lights into our bedroom.
Yeah, it'd be a bright light on the side of the building.
Yep.
Uh, for residential building, if it was a illuminated sign. Um, other comments or questions?
Well, for now.
If everybody has their, you know, I'm, I looked at whatever the building schematic is for your exterior detail. And the one thing I can't tell is what color are these going to be? Just so we don't have any surprise with electric blue or something.
Typically, they're gray.
I'm sorry?
Typically, we use a light gray.
Light gray?
Yeah, dark gray trim with a light gray on base. They're, they're a neutral color, Miss Haley.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Robert, are there any variants? Uh, not variants, is any um, waivers from our rules requested?
We haven't requested any waivers.
Haven't requested any waivers, okay. Nope. Let's tackle a public hearing. Um, are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Okay, got a couple of hands up. Can you gentlemen let them have the table so that they can sit down while they're offering their comments and then we'll invite you back to respond? Come on forward and you can either stand or sit, whatever you like better.
Yeah, I can stand up for a few minutes, I guess so. But yeah, so my name is Jack Long of Seventeen Twin Bridge Road. And I'd also like to, if people don't know me, we also represent James Long, grandson, who we've been running trucks in and out of Twin Bridge Road for seventy-five who we've been running trucks in and out of Twin Bridge Road for seventy-five years, which I'll reference later. My first question would be, I'd just like to know, when would this actually approve for condominium and not retail space?
Yeah, it's not a condominium, it's an apartment, but.
Apartment or residential, whatever.
Part of the planned use development program from the nineteen eighties.
Because I know this was all originally planned for retail space. And the future plans call for extending the original mall building out to Twin Bridge Road and another building behind the Jade. Basically, I had all the plans, I helped Patterson clear the land. And I never saw anything about condominiums and. Back in the eighties, probably four or five residences on Twin Bridge Road, three of us are here tonight. And nobody has ever notified us, heard anything about condominiums until this year.
Yeah. Well, that's when this proposal came forward, was this year. And again, they're not condominiums, they're apartments, but.
Well, apartments, but the residences anyway, so, but. So that's.
Yeah, that's, they brought this forward this year. So you would have gotten the notification.
I'd like to note that, how does that work? Does the town allow two different plans on one approval and two different zonings? Residence and commercial?
There's a lot going on on this particular property that affects the way that's regulated, but it starts with a planned use development, a PUD, which was done originally back in the eighties and it had some residential that was off of Front Street. And then the commercial over here. And then, um, over the years, there's been a bunch of different modifications to the PUD, but in June or July.
Also a lot of, I'm not sure what the regulations for children, our, our kids living on that housing, but, uh, I hope they have playgrounds. Cause like I say, we've been running trucks in there seventy-five years and I just don't wanna see Twin Bridge Road turned into a playground. Playground, cause that's a, a lot of units on a small parcel land.
So the applicant came a couple of months ago to our meeting here, this planning board meeting, and asked for permission to put more residential in the PUD. And then tonight is their site plan review for this site.
You're still saying this was part of the original Frontal Street condominium project?
No, they added it in at our, a meeting two, three months ago.
Two or three months ago, all right, so. So, all right, I just don't understand.
We'll, we will definitely ask them some questions about places for kids to play because workforce housing does have kids.
And also, I know Nelson is sidewalks. I have a question about the sidewalks because the two last two construction projects, they narrowed up Twin Bridge Road by four feet in two different places. One to put that sidewalk in by sales. If you look at that, to go run that telephone pole, they narrowed up the road by four feet. And the same thing down at ten Twin Bridge Place. They took out four footed pavement, put in a Cape Cod curb, no sidewalk there. But it makes a really dangerous situation because two trucks can't pass. We're not, we're lucky, we have most repeat trucks and they know when another truck comes, one of them has to stop. These roads eighteen feet and basically the trucks on the, big trucks run pretty close to nine feet. So that, that just doesn't add up. That's the third one, I'm glad to see, about the entranceway. So I know, hopefully they don't, I don't know how wide that enters, I hope they don't, the trouble with the old entranceway is they made it wider in most of our town roads. Cause the signs and markings don't always work. Cause over the years, we've had multiple accidents there. I'd say more than ten, because there's no stop sign. Cars just drive right out there and drive right inside of a truck. So, I mean, that's a simple solution. I make that entrance, cause that was part of the original approval of that, where there's no exit onto Twin Bridge Road from that mall. So, I mean, you can have the entrance, but don't make it twenty or twenty-four feet wide like the old one. If you make it twelve feet wide, so it doesn't look like a two-way street.
So far, the plan is not to have any entrance other than emergency vehicles, so it should cut that off.
All right, that's it.
Hey, thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
Welcome. You can sit, stand, whatever you like.
Don't stand. Uh, Steve Cook, seven Twin Bridge Road. Uh, my concerns is I'd like to see a privacy fence along that side of the road. Cause cars turn in to pack and stuff, light's gonna be shining in my, uh, windows and stuff. That's my concern. I know there's gonna be landscaping and everything, but. A privacy fence would be good for our side of the road, you know, so that way the lights are not shining in our windows.
How far down is your house at seven Twin Bridge Road?
Uh, right before you go down the hill. Right before the, uh,
Just before the back.
The back entrance where the trucks go in.
Okay. Do we have one that shows? There you go. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cook.
That's my only concerns.
Okay. Yeah, I think there's a lot of trees and things planted there, but we'll hear from the applicant about some more. Okay, anybody else wish to weigh in?
Thing I want on this road before he even does one thing.
Stop, name, name.
First, Robert, you French?
Robert, thank you so much.
Three Twin Bridge Road, all right.
Three Twin Bridge Road?
The only thing I want is no parking on that street whatsoever. Before even cut one twig on that friggin' road.
You want no parking signs on the road? Is that what you said? Okay. I think the applicant said that he'd be willing to work.
But that's up to you guys, would it? He does not. And like, my neighbors had the privacy fence down, down outside of, they'd like to be shining right now, Bill. My house is right across the street. So, you know, what he does, all right. Don't know what's up there, but it is, uh, in far as I'm concerned, there should be a gate on that road.
Yeah, that's what the, the fire department was talking about before.
That road that's here now, that Nelson said is, that shouldn't be done, that originally was one-way. In, no exit. So if they do keep that road, be no exit.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. Any others that wish to weigh in?
Uh, Rick Foot, one twenty-nine Indian Rock Road. I'm curious, the entrance and exit to this place, i- is it all out through Twin Brook Road or do they all go out through the mall?
Uh, it all goes through the mall.
It goes through the mall, really? Well, okay. Will there be a traffic light? This goes through the mall, I'm assuming now, but there won't be a traffic light on Twin Brook at the top of the right, Indian Rock, I mean, uh, Daniel Webster and, uh, there and.
Yeah, there is one there today, at Front Street.
Not Front Street, I'm saying, but, um, uh, Twin Brook. There won't be a traffic light at Twin Brook and, and there.
No, this, this applicant's proposing that none of his traffic will flow there. And, um, that would also be very close to other intersections where the red lights and green light cycles would start to interfere with each other and you'd actually cause traffic with a traffic light there.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to weigh in? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Um, applicant, come on back forward and, uh, I'll, I'll give you a sort of a free for all to respond to whatever you heard, and then we'll have questions of, of the points that caught our attention.
It appears, Mr. Chair, that there are three major concerns. Uh, one has to do with the, um, PUD. So strangely enough, the entire parcel is owned residential. It's the shopping center that's not grandfathered use, not the, not the residential units. Uh, secondly, the PUD was approved in the late seventies, early eighties. By right, the, we were allowed twenty-seven units under the original PUD and saw the variance this year to raise it for the other twenty units. We were allowed twenty-eight and we got a variance for twenty more. So that happened earlier in the year, just to clarify for the first gentleman. With respect to the privacy fence, um, we're, as you can see, we have quite a tight lot. We prefer landscaping and that's what we've done. We've put a fairly significant landscaping buffer between Twin Bridge and the building. And what was the third one? Oh, the parking signs. I'd already brought the concern to the board's attention in my original presentation and we'd be happy to put in the parking signs if the board sees fit. Parking signs, I'm sorry, not parking signs.
No parking.
One other, one other item, question on the narrowing of the road with the addition of the sidewalk. The way I've, uh, laid that sidewalk out is to follow the existing edge of pavement, so there won't, we're not encroaching four feet into the travel way to create that sidewalk. We have enough right away going across the front of the property to keep the road width as is.
Okay. Is that side of the road already got curbs today? Granite curbs or no? So you're gonna have granite curbs? Is that gonna change the drainage on, um, Twin Bridge Road?
Yeah, a, a little bit, that's, uh, gonna get its way down into the lower drive access.
Okay. You have a catch basin down there or something?
No. Uh, today, that water all just flows down the edge of the road. Heads down in that direction. So it's not gonna run off onto a gravel shoulder, it's gonna stay along the curb line.
Okay. So where does it go?
No closed drainage. I, as, you know, from what I've seen, what I assume is it just flows down the edge of the road. Heads off, off to our lot corner. There, there is no closed drainage out there today.
Okay. But now there's nothing that stops it from running into the grass there?
Uh, correct.
And the curb is gonna keep it on the pavement and flowing down at least to that utility access in the back?
Correct.
Was that, uh, Robert, was that anything that our, uh, Public Works Department commented upon?
I'm sorry, one more time? Ask about what?
Effect of, on, on Bridge, Twin Bridge Road of, uh, putting a curbed sidewalk along the north side of Twin Bridge Road? And whether that was gonna redirect stormwater that now can exit the pavement?
Give me a minute to go through the comments, I'm not that familiar. While I'm doing that, just to answer your question, if you were to look into putting no parking signage along Twin Bridge, Twin Bridge Road itself, that would require Highway Safety Committee and possibly Town Council discussion and review and approval.
Thank you for that, Robert. If, if we wanted to impose that as a condition, I would urge the board to, um, temper the recommendation to make sure that it's approved by the Highway Safety and the Town Council. And if the applicant can't achieve those, then he doesn't have to do the signs. Otherwise, we would put him in a position where he's told by us to do a thing and told by somebody else that he can't. Jason, can you walk me through the, um, landscape plan to know what kind of trees and bushes and shrubs you've got here and what's existing and what's proposed? Mostly, I see, I, the plantings that are labeled and maple trees and all of that stuff I get, but the ones that's sort of drawn like a cloud, which is normally like the edge of woodland, yeah.
It's existing, uh, maple sprout, you know, existing vegetation out there in some time. So not really yet, moving on. Very up to that front landscape power. One of the comments.
Oh, there you go. I'm not even watching my guy wave at me back there.
One of, uh, one of the comments, uh, I'm not sure what department had it, was, we're still not applying the landscape calculation properly in this area, so I haven't looked at the calculation. I'll probably need to talk to Tim on that. I believe he's the one that wrote that comment. So my understanding from the comment is we'll need to add some more in here. He's bringing it to our attention for a reason. So how much, I'm not sure. I, I gotta, I'm obviously misreading that regulation somehow. So I need some clarification on that. But we'll, we'll work that out, uh, with staff on how many additional. So that, that's all this cloud is, is whatever's there for existing vegetation. And then we're looking to supplement with, um, some maple, um, and some evergreens.
So.
So white spruce down in, in the area that we gotta close up the existing entrance.
Okay. I see certain shrubs as well. Um, I would encourage you as you work, assuming the board gives you conditional approval and you have to work with Tim to resolve that question. Think about shrubs, low to the ground, evergreens, things that are gonna block headlights. Rather than, ma- maple trees are lovely and beautiful and all that, but they're not gonna do a thing for what the neighbors' concerns were about. Yeah, Arboretty is once, I bet.
So the board's preferences to work, you know, uh, address the landscape issue with more shrubbery and lower evergreen type growth, okay?
Yeah, to pay attention to the neighbors' concerns about headlights. I think that the direction of traffic that you have, um, will have only one spot where lights are really gonna be a problem, and that's coming straight down through from the plaza. That, yeah, that, that's where you're gonna have headlights shining across Twin Bridge Road. Every other, every place else you're gonna turn and the lights are gonna face away from it.
Yeah, and that, and that's why, you know, showing to close up that existing entrance with, um, the, uh, white spruce. So they have a green in that area. Cause I wanna, I, my idea was to create that visual block. People are used to seeing Twin Bridge, I'm going in that direction, but if they see a wall of trees there, it, it distracts them in, in finding another way out.
Yep. Yeah, so let's use that for two things, distracting them so they don't find another way out and also to diffuse the headlights as best we can in that area. Okay, uh, you did hear questions from the, uh, public about kids and playgrounds and, um, I don't know what your thoughts are on those. Let's hear what your thoughts are and we can all comment on it.
I haven't proposed any, Dick. Uh, you have any thoughts on that?
We didn't address playgrounds in the plan. It wasn't called for under the ordinance, but, um, typically I can tell you that the density, and I know that this came up at, um, CBA and Ms. Christiansen can probably verify this, that, um, the expectation is about point two-three kids per unit. So you're talking about twelve kids in the entire, um, workforce housing project would be about the density of children.
I think that it'll be less than that actually, based on what we've seen from other places. My comment on that is that even places where you have kids, playgrounds just aren't what's getting kids' attention anymore. They just aren't gonna coalesce around the playground. Yeah. Uh, whatever it is, a skateboard park or something like that'd be more interesting or whatever, but for, you know, the old sort of swing set monkey bars thing, this doesn't get it with the kids anymore. And they're hugely expensive to build.
Well, that's actually very practical of you, cause we maintain some fairly large ones that don't have much usage.
So you've seen that in some of your developments in places too?
Yeah, absolutely, especially in Manchester.
Yeah, I believe it. Um, what are your guys' thoughts on, um, general amenities, outdoor amenities, a place to, uh, have a barbecue or a picnic table or that sort of thing? Is there spaces that you can give people a little bit of outdoor?
That was that green area between the building and the fence that, that, um, either Mr. Dano or Mr. Anketel brought up. That's, that would, is where we, that would be located.
Do you have the intention to put some of that stuff there, like any kind of a, you know, literally a couple picnic tables or?
Paving blocks.
Yeah, paving blocks or, uh, a barbecue or something, I don't know, I mean.
We always designate a barbecue area so that the grills aren't put on the decks or out in the parking lots. And that was the area that we were planning on designating for it. And typically, we put at least one picnic table in the area of the barbecue so they have someplace to rest all of the things that they bring out.
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense. That probably will get a little bit more use than, um, than playgrounds might be. Board members, I don't wanna be the only one that weighs in on that question though. What are you guys' thoughts on generally amenities that are built?
I would assume you're gonna be addressing, um, grill areas and grills in your lease agreement?
Yes, that's what we do. And it's specifically spelled out, it's not allowed in the decks, not allowed in the parking areas or any of that kind of stuff. And that's why remember that site plan I told you about earlier that we pass out to every tenant at the initial? It has the location on it where they could be located.
Brian?
Um, on these, these are Juliet balconies or are there actual, like, space for them?
I'm sorry, I.
Are they, are they Juliet balconies where it's just like a sliding door with a railing?
Yes.
Okay.
I never used that term before, I didn't know what you meant. Yeah, there's no external space, it's just, um.
He's showing his age, he, he's must be much older than he looks.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Okay, there are no waivers requested. Uh, does the board require more information than it has tonight, or is the board prepared to take final action on the plan? What is your intention? Oh, Nelson, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Well, no, I, I was going to try to answer your question, and that is, I think we've talked about things that can be done right away and things that we don't know if we can do or not. So I'm not ready to accept this plan. This, I still am not persuaded that that taking away this entrance to the parking lot is a good idea. I think it was better with it. And the other thing I'm concerned about is the salt getting into the water table at the wells. And I wanted to see something more in the drainage, something more definite as to what, what the drainage is gonna be. So I feel we're still incomplete in that regard.
Okay, now, they're, but they're not using any salt on their property?
They already are.
Well, we're gonna put a restriction as part of this, it's a restriction number twenty-three in the staff's memo, or twenty-four, something like that.
No salt.
No salt on the property.
On this property or on the total?
We only control this property on, as far as this application that's before us.
Well, this property is dependent on the other property as, as a condition, as one of its possible ways of handling the salt or of handling their drainage was to put it in with the, I didn't realize with no salt at all being allowed on the adjacent property. You shaking your head yes, but.
I'm not, no, I was shaking my head either way, I was trying to listen to your question.
Lynn was shaking.
So, Robert, can you help me find the comment about salt?
There's a note on the plan.
Oh, on the plan, note on the plan, that's why I'm not finding it in the memo. Note twenty-six, no salt or chemical deicers are to be used for winter maintenance. And winter maintenance shall be performed by a Green Snow Pro certified or Functional Equipment certified contractor. So that's what the comment says now. We should discuss that a little bit because those two things are inconsistent. Green Snow Pro is a salt application process. And so if it's no salt, it isn't Green Snow Pro.
For what it's worth, the note is exactly as written in our site plan regulations, so that would require amendment in the future.
That doesn't surprise me. I think that I would want to see a no salt, a no deicers here and not the Green Snow Pro piece on this particular parcel because it's a sensitive parcel. Um, and I know that we've gone over this before, back when Stan was here and he was arguing with us about salt use in the condos in the back and relief from things and all of that, so.
Well, I'm basing it on what the data we've seen from MVD regarding the salt going up every year. And this is a major contributor to it, this is, so is the rest of the comments, and this doesn't solve the whole problem, but.
No, but putting no salt on this piece of it is as much as we can make this applicant own, okay?
Well, yeah, this is, it, it. I'm not sure, but because he's feeding, he, he gave me two different drainage systems here. You know, one of his drainage systems goes back into the, goes into this onsite, this underground disposal. And another one, the other alternative that he's yet to work out with the state and so on, it would affect, would go into the system that's right next to the MVD wells.
Yes, but in either case, if he's putting unsalted water into the system, he's helping to dilute it and improving the situation, no matter what's going on.
But in one case, they're, they're reducing, they're reducing what's going into the system.
Yes.
In one case, that's the case I wanna see him do.
Although, I don't know the science of this, we've had, when we were studying the salt thing, they talked about how far salt, sodium and chloride travels. And if you infiltrated sodium and chloride here instead of five hundred feet that way, it doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of difference in how far it travels, uh, because it's such a good traveler. Jason?
Just to maybe help clarify, it is the same exact system, the design is the exact same layout. The difference between what we've presented to DES is the inclusion of infiltration up under our parking lot or whether or not DES will prevent us from doing that infiltration. But the, the design is the same, the layout is the same, the emergency overflow still connects into the drainage system in front of the plaza. All that drainage makes its way down to that detention pond on Front Street. So the only difference between what I was trying to present is whether or not DES will allow us to infiltrate on our lot.
Which thereby reduces the amount of volume of water.
Right.
That's sent down into the drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and either way, they're, they've got the expertise on which is the better environmental solution, so.
Mr. Chair, another, another statement, the um comment about removing the Green Snow Pro. The, under the RSA's, there, there's permissible. Right, right, so when you have a reduction in salt use, if the individual is not certified under that certification, you don't have the liability, um, the relaxation of the liability. So I guess that would be the only thing. If we're having, I understand Green Snow can use salt product. But not having that certification then puts you outside of that liability of limiting salt use for insurance purposes. So I just wanna be careful that we don't put the applicant into a position where they don't use a Green Snow Pro and they, you know, forego the liability protection under the RSA.
I get what you're saying, and I tell all my commercial clients to use Green Snow Pro for that liability reason as well. We've had a whole bunch of sites around town from the outlet mall on down that are just salt-free and they're not able to take advantage of the Green Snow Pro. I haven't heard any of them talk about a significant insurance cost related to that. If your experience is different or the experience on this site is different.
I don't, I don't have experience that way, it's just, you know, it's not a problem until it is a problem.
Yep.
I can tell you that most, Mr. Chair, most of the commercial um snow removal and snow plowing companies all get Green Pros certified. Because of the sensitivity of the environment and because of the liability purposes, most major um projects require it. And it would be the same guy that, that plows the mall will be plowing the um apartments as well.
I, I don't know who you have for the mall, but the, the last time that we had that debate about salt, I was mentioning this fellow Stan who used to be on our board, lives in the, lived in the condos in the back there, and they wanted to be able to apply some salt there. And they were gonna get a little bit less used up at the mall and a little bit more that the amount of the plaza was massive. And it wasn't even close to Green Snow Pro for what it was approved for, the number of tons per year.
The current?
Well, it was five years ago or.
That was previous to our ownership. The other thing I can tell you is with no real elevations, we're a flat lot. The use of salt is minimal, cuz usually we use salt where there's the ability to have some incline. When a level lot, we don't use a lot of salt, plus we have really good drainage, so.
They were using crazy, crazy amounts, Lynn, you had a comment.
The fact that somebody is Green Snow Pro certified doesn't mean they have to use salt.
No.
Correct.
So they can be certified to take care of the insurance requirement, but we're also specifying that there is no salt.
Correct.
Correct.
So we're gonna have no salt there.
Okay. Not sure I analyzed it that way, but Barbara?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the DES website where it says that commercial salt applicator certified by New Hampshire DES Green Snow Pro under RSA four eight nine dash C. And property owners or managers who hire them are granted liability protection against damages arising from snow in ice conditions under RSA five oh eight dash two two.
Yeah, that's what he was trying to make sure that he kept and he was able to access. And I was steering in a different direction when I was saying you can't do Green Snow Pro if you're gonna do salt. But whatever's the will of the board, I don't have to make this my hill to die on, whatever you guys want. If you want Green Snow Pro, so be it.
Well, but, but we have not just Green Snow Pro, we say no salt.
Yeah, but if you say no salt here, Green Snow Pro is a salt application system, it's a low salt system.
But we're not saying that, we're saying you won't do any salt, but you have to use someone who is.
Certified.
Certified, that doesn't say they can use salt.
Okay.
Right.
I kinda think that's how the ordinance was supposed to be interpreted.
I do logic.
Little belt and suspenders. Ed's fine with me, if the, if everybody's satisfied with the comment, I let it go. Other comments or questions? Nelson, you said you had some more and that you had other things that they weren't, didn't explain well enough yet or something?
Well, that was one, and the other thing, I, I, I'm just not happy with having closed off the entrance to the, to the mall.
So let's debate that as a board and see what we think, because ultimately, that's not one where it's more information required and we're gonna do better at analyzing this next month.
Yeah.
Let's just talk it through. I'm with Nelson that I would have left it as a two-way outlet and let people use it to come and go from the apartment building. And, you know, if they wanted to turn left on the DW highway, they would go to the light unless they're stupid. And if they wanted to turn right, they could go up Front Street. Um, and certainly to come into the apartment, uh, coming up to Twin Bridge made sense to me. But uh, what, what does control even more than that is, I trust our fire department. And if that's what they tell us is the right way to approach it, um, you know, that's pretty persuasive as well. I listen to the neighbors who certainly don't want any added traffic, um, and that's pretty persuasive as well, so. Well, I'm normally there, I'm willing to be flexible. John, thank you for coming forward again.
Just to explain our, our opinion on this is we agree that the existing way is the what we wanted originally. And I still hold fast to that, I'd really rather have it that way. This was a compromise, compromise with the developer in order to come up with something that meets our requirements of having a way in and out for us and also a second way out in the event that there's a motor vehicle accident at the other intersection. How do I get three hundred cars out of that parking lot? They have to go out through this way, so that will be an emergency access for cars as well as the fire department in the event of that. At least it gives us that, but our opinion originally was we preferred the way it is right now to be the main road in.
A two-way entrance, okay.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Two-way public access to the apartments, the way it is today.
I'm confused.
He would not close off this emergency access lane and just use it for fire department? He'd say that that was a way that cars could come in and out.
Could go in and out, but right now we're saying that they can't.
Correct.
We're.
And Nelson thinks that's, that we should allow it.
So do I.
John thinks so, you think so?
We've worked with the traffic consultant in giving the uh left site distance out at Twin Bridge, looking down DW. You know, looking at it in purely safety, intersections, light signaling, traffic flow. You know, the location moving all that traffic out to Front Street is, is the direction of the traffic consultant.
Yeah.
And that's, that's.
But people can go to the end of Twin Bridge Road right now and take a left. And if they go in there for any of the people that live there or the trucks that we're talking about going down to the end or the office building that's a little further down, they go, they go left, right, whatever way they wanna go. And I agree that it's a terrible place to make a left turn, I don't like to make a left turn there, I go to the right. Yeah. If we wanted to put a no-left turn signal there at, at DW highway, I would be interested in that. But I'd probably have a lot of people mad at me if I said that. But anyway, that's, that's my thought. So the, why was the traffic consultant focusing on that just because of the left turns at Front Street or site distance?
Site, site distance issues, uh, it's in failure today. And adding additional traffic to that is not, uh, you know, the, the right move. And we have the ability for a controlled lighted intersection, uh, where we're in control of both properties. And it just makes a lot of sense putting all the vehicles out to a lighted intersection.
In addition, it's um, in addition to that safety issue, well, we also met with our butters and it's an accommodation to them. But over and above that, the signalized intersection is really underutilized, so adding the traffic there didn't make any impact at all.
So you want it to be the emergency access only?
We prefer it that way.
You prefer it that way, and your neighbors do too, obviously, that's a very important consideration as well.
That sways me.
Nelson?
I'll offer one comment with regard to the left visibility coming out of Twin Bridge Road. And all that land is gonna be cleared for the new bridge. That's gonna open it up to a much longer uh left turn uh visibility for anybody coming out because that whole berm and everything is gonna be removed when they build the temporary bypass bridge.
Oh, man, the roads.
For Babus, Babus Road, and that's in the plans right now, that's plans I've seen that the state is.
Yeah, that's not very far off in our capital improvement plan for the town.
No.
I think it was actually starting this year with plans.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anybody that hasn't weighed in on this driveway thing that wants to weigh in? Maureen?
Um, I think, just like you had said, I do, I think everybody I know does, drives in that down in that one way and comes out the other way, especially if you're going left, so maybe even a one-way in. But I, I do think keeping it open might be the best, that's my opinion.
Uh, the one thing that I can think of is you're gonna increase the traffic coming across the frontage of all the stores. And already people sit by there pretty good, click, so having increased traffic over there would, is less favorable in my eyes. Having the other access open would kinda alleviate some of that increased traffic.
But if you owned any of those stores, you'd like to.
I'm sure.
But, but also you're gonna have increased traffic going through the residential and the, you know, the parking lot for the residential. So you're gonna have, have a significant, now all those people are going to be traveling through.
Right, yeah, the ten or so, whatever, ten trips that take a left into that exit.
Yeah, we were trying to keep as much of that traffic out of our apartment complex because right now you'd have to travel through the complex and back out through the complex.
That's true.
In order to get to Twin Bridge Road.
That's true too.
So I was just gonna say, I happen to have a friend who's there, lives on that road and not here tonight. But having driven up and down that road for a bit, it's true, that's a little road, it was never meant to be a major thoroughfare. When Sal's and the, and the dance studio and even the hairdresser is, is in full occupation, there are cars that park down there that really decrease the size and the diameter of that road. So if you've increased the traffic, you're going, trying to get through that upper part of the road when you first take that turn, it's gonna be tight. I prefer to see it just the way you've planned it.
Others that wanna weigh in, Brian?
So, I mean, I, I've lived in Merrimack almost my entire life. And as a kid, I used to bomb down Twin Bridge Road, go over to Merrimack Ten Pin. And it felt like definitely you should not be able to do that, so I'm, I'm kind of indifferent. So that's, that's my two-sacred experience, yeah.
Others? I'm persuaded by the applicant and the neighbors if that's what they think is the right way to go with their place and Barbara's comments as well, so. Although I was with you for a while, Nelson, I've changed my mind again.
Yeah, we didn't vote in time.
Okay, um, does anyone, do, do folks wanna vote on that or does it seem like more people are supportive of leaving it as a emergency only or more people wanna see it open? Okay, everybody's happy with it as an emergency only except for Nelson?
No, I'm not happy with it.
No, I heard, except for Nelson.
Oh, okay.
Nelson.
Right, okay.
Okay. What else was something that you were looking at, Nelson, that you thought wasn't developed enough or there was information we would need from another meeting?
Well, it was the business of the salt being introduced into additional salt being or possibly removing some of the salt from the detention pond that's right next to the village district wells. That was, that was my hope that we could reduce the salt there.
Yeah.
The salt infusion into, yeah.
I think when you were talking about that subject, I don't know if it was you or Jason, you said MVD was involved in that discussion with DES over?
I have plans in front of them. I have not received comments. But DES, I have correspondence up with all the supporting information for for the design as designed with infiltration. I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
So I'm still waiting response. Earlier conversation today with Robert, he recommended that I set up a meeting with MVD to, I guess they're a little busy right now, so try to focus on this to to wrap up the review.
Robert, do our staff comments have a requirement that they comply with whatever MVD prefers or?
So we did add a proposed condition number seven that says the applicant shall meet with MVD staff and address any of their comments or requirements related to proposed condition to the public water system. It does not necessarily account for salt application because MVD doesn't typically get into that on their design reviews. They're more focused on the utility connection end.
Okay.
Because they know that we have the no-salt application requirement in our site plan regulations.
Okay, which we're going to implement here. I don't necessarily need it to be a note on the plan, but if it can be some communication to MVD to at least take into consideration that salt and as as it relates to that detention pond and the power lines was part of our discussion and we wanted to make sure they were aware of it.
We can certainly forward copy of the minutes and talk to Ron and anybody else over there to let them know.
Yeah.
That this was considered deeply.
Jamie's here. I'm sure Wolf will know about it.
Anything else to discuss? No?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, so our choices and options are if we feel like we don't have enough information, then we would tell the applicant what to bring us and tell them when to bring it. Or if we don't have any other requests for additional information, then we make a motion and consider what to do with the final disposition of the application. What is the will of the board? Lynn?
I would like to grant conditional final approval to the application with the conditions that are specified in the memo and be fulfilled within six months.
With the addition of the ones we need to hear tonight, probably.
Yeah, I got a couple of amendments to that as the board has kind of gone through tonight.
I would delete 10C, which talks about the sidewalk being extended to the end of the property line.
Correct.
I would also delete the 10K, which relates to the dumpster location. And the board has also suggested adding a bike a bike rack to for once, one in front of each of the buildings. And also that the applicant talk to the Highway Safety Committee and or Town Council about no parking signage along Twin Bridge Road.
Okay. And then on the landscape plan and the headlights for the shrubs and things, I think there's still some discussion to be had with your department to be satisfied with the landscape plan. Is that right?
I didn't note that one.
The applicant suggested that Tim was still thinking that the interpretation of landscape plan should be different. There should be more shrubbery.
Oh, the parking lot landscape. Yeah, yeah.
And so as a part of that parking lot landscape discussion, consider ways to mitigate or minimize headlight glare or sweep across the houses. Anything else that we need to add? If not, is there a second for Lynn's extended motion? Barbara? Further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed?
One opposed.
Any abstaining? Six, one, zero. So thank you very much for the presentation and for.
Thank you. We appreciate. We appreciate all of your time, even Nelson, who I've known most of my development life.
Sorry, Dick. Sometimes you have to do these things.
Nelson, you've always been a man of your word.
There you go. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Okay, item five on our agenda is HHCI Properties LLC is the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a waiver of full site plan review to expand an existing parking area by 43 spaces and other associated site improvements. The parcels located at 10 Al Paul Lane and the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Gentlemen. Gentlemen. Dick, can you take the conversation out in the hallway? Thanks, sorry. Okay, Aquifer Conservation District sits tax map 2D, lot 4-5, case planning board 2022-30. Robert, is there anything that we need to note before we hear from the applicant?
Just one change to the staff memo. Since that staff memo went out where we recommended that a variance would be necessary due to the the owner applicant of the application being a nursing trade school, which is not a permitted use in the industrial district. The applicant has since provided me information that they have been a tenant at the property since 2006 and have obtained multiple building permits for seeking renovations of that facility over the years, which we have never been consulted over as best as I could tell. That renders the use as legal nonconforming, so no further action would be needed in regards to this site plan other than planning board action.
Okay. So please introduce yourself and tell us about your extra parking spaces.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Ethan Beals. I'm a project manager at Hayner Swanson doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashville, New Hampshire. Here tonight seeking application acceptance and approval for a proposed parking expansion located at 10 Al Paul Lane. I'm going to go ahead and present the facts of the case and then would be happy to answer any questions that that any of the members of the board may have.
Great, thank you.
The the subject property is known in the assessor's office as map 2D, lot 4-5, and is located at 10 Al Paul Lane. Property is abutted by vacant land owned by Penetech Waterworks to the west, Al Paul Lane and land owned by BAE Systems to the north, a property that's currently developed as a parking lot to the south, and other commercial and office uses to the east. The property measures approximately 6.2 acres and is located within Merrimack's I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Protection District. The property was originally developed in the late 1990s as a commercial and office building. The property currently contains a two-story, 43,000-square-foot building that is surrounded by parking on all sides. Access to the site is generally provided via a driveway curve cut onto Al Paul Lane. But the property also benefits from an access easement across lot 4-6, which provides access out to Manchester Street. The site and building is currently serviced by municipal sewer, water by Penetech Waterworks, and underground gas, electric, and telecommunications. Existing stormwater runoff is collected by a closed drainage system which conveys runoff to an existing stormwater management area which currently lies west of the site. HHCI or Harmony Healthcare Institute has operated out of the building since 2006. And they they provide training and education needed to offer a licensed practical nurse or LPN program that is full approval and license from the New Hampshire Department of Education and the New Hampshire Board of Nursing. Harmony Healthcare Institute has gone through several interior expansions as their operations have grown since 2006 and currently operate out of approximately 20,000 square feet or nearly half of the building. The remaining 23,000 square feet is utilized by three other tenants who all utilize the space as regular built building office space. In December 2021, HHCI purchased the property. Prior to that, the subject property, lot 4-6, and the parking lot on the adjacent lot 4-7 were all under common ownership. At that time, both the subject property and lot 4-7 benefited from an agreement to utilize that parking lot, which lies just to the south. That agreement will be expiring later this month. My client is looking to add additional parking spaces so that he can continue to provide his tenants, faculty, and students with flexible parking options required to operate their respective businesses. It is proposed to construct an additional 43 parking spaces upon the property. 12 spaces will be constructed along the existing driveway out to Al Paul Lane. Nine parallel parking spaces will be constructed behind the building. Eight spaces will be constructed along the driveway connection to lot 4-6. And finally, 14 spaces will be constructed along a shared driveway along the southern property line. Once fully constructed, the site will contain 209 parking spaces. Other site improvements as part of this project include curbing, an additional accessible parking space, and minor drainage improvements. As previously mentioned, the site primarily drains to an existing stormwater management area which lies to the northwest of the the site. It's our intent to continue to utilize this existing stormwater basin to handle the runoff generated by the increased impervious area on the site. In total, the four parking areas add a total of approximately 8,085 square feet of impervious area. Based on the minor nature of this project in comparison with the overall site area and the total amount of impervious area draining to this basin and a reexamination of the original study for this basin, it is our professional opinion that the basin is adequately sized to handle the proposed increase in runoff generated by the parking expansion. If successful tonight, our client our clients' hope is to begin construction later this fall. We're here tonight seeking one waiver, a waiver of full site plan in a waiver letter that was dated August 5, 2022. Unless the board would like me to read the entirety of that letter, I'd ask the letter be incorporated into the record by reference, and I'm happy to summarize that request.
Summarize.
As I mentioned, we're requesting a waiver of full site plan due to the minor nature of the parking expansion compared to the overall size of the subject property. We feel that the plan set consisting of a master site plan, two site plans, and detail sheet provide the board and any contractor sufficient information to understand the location and nature of the proposed project. Furthermore, it's our opinion that providing all of the additional items that are typically required, landscaping, lightings, a full stormwater study, traffic study, provides no real benefit to those reviewing the project and creates an additional expense to our client. In summary, we feel the proposed parking expansion project is a responsible development that will help the building tenants continue to operate their successful businesses here in Merrimack. Furthermore, we feel that the project meets the goals and regulations of the Merrimack Site Plan Regulations. The conditions and stipulations from staff seem reasonable outlined in the staff reports. And and we're happy to continue to work with staff to address those, and they seem reasonable and are agreeable to our clients. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Ethan, for the presentation. Board members, our first task as always is to decide whether the applications got sufficient information to be considered complete and subject to our jurisdiction.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion in a second to find the application complete? Neil?
I was just going to second, but beat me to it.
I thought you had a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero, two, find the application complete. And the applicant has made a request for a waiver of full site plan review and has offered up an explanation which generally describes the burdens that would be associated with conducting full site plan review. My own opinion is to be generally supportive of that, although part of what would be in a full site plan review would be some landscaping plan that had parking lot landscaping requirements and some percentage of the parking lot that would be dedicated to some trees and shrubs and things. I do not want to put the applicant through doing a landscape plan or that kind of thing, but perhaps part of our condition of approval could be the addition of, you know, some small number of shrubs and trees and things for landscaping to be figured out with the community development department if Robert thinks that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's fine. The applicant applicant's amenable to it. You can certainly request some additional landscaping.
And perhaps the rest of the board doesn't agree with me and it isn't a condition. But typically, when we consider a parking lot, we would have some percentage, I think it's 5% or something, dedicated to landscaping and.
Mr. Chairman.
It's a tough site to work at.
Oh, it's absolutely a tough site. It would be around the perimeters, obviously.
And it's way out of sight. It's off Al Paul Lane. Nobody drives on Al Paul Lane.
No, but all the people that are there on the on the site are either going to see a relatively unbroken parking field or a few trees here and there. That's all my thought was.
Mr. Chairman, I will I will just note that all of the proposed parking expansion, there is no clearing, there's no removal of existing shrubs. It's all in existing just grassed or gravel areas on the site. That being said, if it's the will of the board, I'm sure we can work with staff.
Yeah, I didn't want to propose a particularly high burden. I just that would be the one piece that's missing in full site plan review is an understanding of some parking lot landscaping. To me, I I would assume where you've located these aren't going to be terribly strongly affected by lighting and you're not proposing the addition of any new lighting. So I wouldn't have any issues with not seeing a lighting plan. You already talked about drainage, so. Board members, we've not taken up the question of a waiver of full site plan review. What do you think about the question or or certain elements that you would like to maintain our regulation over in some degree? Nelson?
I'm okay without a full site plan review for this really minor change to an existing.
The others generally concur? Okay. Then let's take that as a.
You can take that as a motion.
And a second to waive full site plan review.
Yeah.
The statutory criteria is in our memo, I'm sure.
Yeah, would be an unnecessary hardship.
Okay. With that in mind, all in favor of granting the waiver of full site plan review, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? John? Going once, twice. Okay, board members, general discussion, discussion with the applicant. Lynn?
I've got a question, but I think it's probably for Robert. Under the project description, the second paragraph, the end says their narrative that a parking agreement that was once in place allowing the subject property utilize the adjacent parking lot apparently is no longer valid. However, under 5H, staff is asking, why is the adjacent existing parking lot not being utilized for parking space since they have reciprocal cross, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? That seems to.
It's a Public Works comment, so I don't know if there are actually easements in place or not. And from the sounds of it, there is no formal easement agreement actually recorded in place on the site.
So that that is corrected. It does get a little complicated in that area. There's a number of different utility access and use easements in that area. The the summary of which is there there was a that the easement, the cross easement on that was not an easement, it was an agreement. So the access and utility easements are still existing. It it wasn't. The parking was more of an agreement that has since expired.
Okay, so that's why.
Correct.
Okay.
It also would have meant that when it was built, the planning board didn't require any more spaces than were on its site proper. And the parking easement didn't add anything to the planning board's review. Otherwise, it would have been an easement because we wouldn't have accepted a private agreement if it was a planning board requirement.
Yeah, also, both lots were under the same ownership at the time this agreement was reached. I think, is that correct?
Yes, so so previously before December 2021, the subject property, which I have my cursor on, this property and the parking lot were all under similar ownership and in such that both of these two properties benefited from the use of that parking lot. It there's, as I mentioned, HHCI purchased the property in December 2021. My understanding is that that agreement is expiring in short order. I don't know if the owner of that property is looking to do something instead of having just a vacant parking lot. But but as I said, that's a different owner, and so that's really for them to decide.
Okay.
A question for staff. Will this lot with if this change were implemented, would the lot meet our current parking requirements?
Yes, it does. It's got actually quite a number of excess spaces here.
Okay, even with the with the loss of all those other places and just the addition of the new ones.
Yeah, with the addition of the new spaces, I believe the requirement, the numbers are on the plan. I think it's somewhere around 140 spaces and and they're going up to over 200 with with these additional ones.
Ethan, can you zoom in on note seven?
It's probably because they're burning a school there and they're running.
So so I will note that that this was prior to that this counts all of it as office space. Just a quick parking lot, if I park and calc based on the regulations, if if 23,000 square feet is office and 20,000 is the the education facility, 152 total spaces would be required based on the current regulation. So to confirm what Robert says, we we are, we do have in excess either way, even without the proposed 43 spaces. But like I mentioned, it's it's really for a flexibility of my my client likes to to make sure that his three office use tenants have dedicated parking areas on the site and then his students and faculty kind of fill in around. So how it worked previously was all he he made all of his students he had park in that parking lot on the adjacent property so that all of the onsite parking was specifically dedicated to his tenants. Obviously, with the expiration of that agreement, he just wants to continue to provide his tenants flexible parking space while continuing to maintain his own business.
Thanks. Thank you.
Robert? Just to switch gears, just to put on the board's radar, since I had this point emphasized pretty strongly to me by Public Works, has to do with snow storage and how snow is treated right now. This not doesn't necessarily. This not, doesn't necessarily require any action per se, but really just to relate to your clients. DPWs made note that snow is currently being pushed across Al Paul Lane and across Manchester Street, which is causing problems on the other sides of those roads, and they really want it strongly emphasize that that cannot continue. Um, also, they do have concern with the lack of snow storage areas being shown on the site, but just for the board's knowledge, um, that's where one of the comments that staff provided here was to note on the plan that excess snow that can't be stored on the site and has to be removed.
Okay, do you have any snow storage spaces that you're showing on the site now?
Uh, um, on, on this plan, we, I, I am not currently showing, um, as part of a plan revision and in response to those DPW, um, comments. Um, we are, we are definitely going to look at where onsite can store and then add the note of, um, of any excess snow. Has, must be trucked offsite and disposed of in a legal manner as opposed to pushing it across Al Paul Lane. Which is absolutely something that we're going to have a conversation with our client about, to make sure that their operations also reflect, um, what we're going to be showing on our plans.
Excellent, okay. Thank you, Robert and Ethan. Other comments or questions? Then is the board prepared to take final action? Lynn? Nelson?
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I, I make a motion, I, I will make a motion to approve the, are we doing the approval of, we've done the waiver of full site plan review. And so to approve the plan as presented with the conditions just outlined by, uh, by Robert. And, uh, stated in his memo.
It's motion in a second.
Just to subtract, uh, condition six A, which had to do with the variance that I had initially required.
Yes, less, yeah, less six A.
I would also delete five H with that strange question from, I don't know where, about why is the adjacent parking lot? I don't know how the applicant would respond to that condition.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
I think he answered the question here verbally, so it doesn't need to be asked again.
Okay.
Did you get that, Robert?
And the, um, Manchester Street and Al Paul Lane is in here as five J. Okay, uh, further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Thank you very much for your patience as you waited through a longer presentation to get to yours.
I'm glad mine was a little bit quicker.
Me too.
If you want to spend more time with us, proposed apartments. Okay, discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anybody have any items of concern to discuss? Robert, um, well, I don't know, it's not Robert's announcement, but it's an announcement. It was in an email to everyone, but I don't know if everybody noticed it, but our competent and capable Casey has moved on to bigger and better things in Epping. Epping, almost said Exeter. And so, uh, poor Tim is going to be charged again with going out in the world and finding us some new qualified help.
And training a new person.
Yeah.
So they can move on.
That's it. Robert, what was Casey's exact title?
She will be town planner for Epping.
Town, and what, here? Assistant, assistant town planner here?
Here, yeah, she's assistant planner here.
Assistant planner.
Great.
So we'll need a new assistant planner. And, uh, thank you very much to Casey for all her hard work. We should all be grateful to have all of the support we get from staff, but, uh, Tim is always also both, um, sad a little bit to see people move on, but also happy for them to have, um, risen to that next level and it's about the third or fourth time that we've had somebody, um, launch from here, from the next step, so.
We have a lot of people launch from there.
Yeah, well, that's all right. We, we should be.
It shows that their, our management does good job.
Yeah, and we're picking the right people. Um, okay, that's all I have for discussion and possible action. Were there other items of concern? If nobody else has any, let's take up the minutes of August sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
I move we approve as distributed.
Motion in a second to approve as distributed. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, I have a comment on.
What do you got?
Page three. One, two, three, four, five. Sixth paragraph.
What line?
Line thirty-three. This whole sentence reads, Kathy Bradford also spoke in favor of leaving the area as open as possible. Echoing a lot of comments that were previously made by other residents. He pointed out that future residents will simply not purchase a home in that development if it does not contain a clubhouse. And what she testified was if it does contain a clubhouse, she was testifying in favor of doing away with the clubhouse.
So we've managed to reverse it?
Yeah. It, it so that it should read, will simply purchase, will not purchase a home in that development if it does, if it contains a clubhouse. And that's something they were looking for.
Okay.
Is that, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, Robert's shaking his head.
No, actually, I thought the original draft of it, she's saying if somebody's looking for a clubhouse, they'll simply not buy here if that's something they were looking for.
Yeah.
So the way it was originally written, I think, was correct.
Yeah, that's all I took out.
Okay, maybe I missed.
Is that right?
I can, I can also modify the language to make it more clear that that's the intent of what she's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think she was saying if somebody wants a clubhouse, they'll just go somewhere else.
Yeah. Right, and that's, that's what I'm saying is I can, I can make that language more clearly state that if, if the board would like that.
That's all.
Thank you, Nelson.
Okay.
With that in mind, I think we already voted, but we can do it again. All in favor with the edit, say aye.
Aye.
Without the edit.
Yeah, with no edit. Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstention. Uh, so Neil is abstained from approving the minutes of August sixteenth. There being no further business before this board, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Jamie got the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Thank you, everyone. Don't forget to turn your microphones off and thank you for the good work.